Evening folks.
Howdy.
Howdy. Where is everybody tonight?
I don't know.
I'm here.
They know the number two and number four basketball teams in the country are at tip off right now.
Maybe that's where they are.
That's where I'd like to be soon.
That is within your control. That is within your control, I believe.
You control your own destiny, Don.
And you know, that's the nice thing about Zoom meetings, Don, you could actually have the game open on one half of your screen, probably.
Well, it's on TV, but.
Oh, okay.
I could, I could open the door and look out there because Sharon has the game on, so. But I'm not going to do that.
Okay. Oh, let's see. Seven o'clock, I see all of the commissioners here except for Dr. Love.
You're putting little guy to bed, huh?
Could be.
I'll call him.
Like I said, it's seven o'clock, we'll wait a few minutes.
Let me give him a quick call.
Okay. Hello, Krista. Glenn Punnett, I see you found your way in.
Here comes Dr. Love.
Hey.
Yes, Mike, thank you so much for your help.
Robert, good to see you.
Thank you, sorry for my tardiness.
Okay, not that bad. Folks, at seven oh two, we will call to order the regular March meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. Mr. Clemmon, would you take the role, please?
Yes, Chikovitz.
Yes.
Love.
Present.
Weatherby.
Yeah.
Johnson.
There.
Watson.
Here.
Taylor.
Present.
Cotton.
Here.
Gaus.
Present.
All commission members are present.
Thank you, sir. First item on our agenda is consideration of the minutes of the February meeting commissioners, you have, I presume you have copies of those minutes and haven't had and have had an opportunity to review them. Are there any additions or corrections to the February minutes?
I have a correction.
Mr. Boss?
Yeah, on page six, the very last item. I don't know what the right answer is, but we sure as hell didn't adjourn at seven oh five.
That's true. We'll have to check the tape.
Check the tape and change the dollar or change the time.
Yes.
Yeah, it should be eight oh five.
Okay, very good. With that, we would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Move to approve.
Mr. Cotton, in support from.
Weatherby.
From Weatherby, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Be opposed. The February minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is case number twenty one zero zero nine, a request for rezoning at eighteen fifty three West Mommy Street. This was tabled at our February meeting, so in order to get this on the discussion agenda, I would entertain a motion to untable it.
Looked on table.
Support.
A motion from Taylor, support from Cotton, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, as I said, this is a request for rezoning at eighteen fifty three West Mommy Street, and in fact, is a consideration of rezoning for a number of properties adjacent to it. Let me take a minute to review the process we use for considering rezoning requests and the criteria that we use that we must use in considering such requests. Requests for rezoning are acted upon by the City Planning Commission. However, any action that we may take this evening is in the form of a recommendation to the City Commission. Rezoning requires a change in the zoning ordinance and that authority rests with the City Commission. The criteria that we must use in making a recommendation regarding rezoning is specified by the city ordinance includes and includes specific areas to be considered. What identifiable conditions related to the application have changed and would therefore justify the proposed change in zoning? Are there any precedents that would be created by either approving or denying the petition and what are the possible effects of those precedents? What is the impact on the ability of the city and other governmental units to provide adequate public services and facilities that might be reasonably required in the future if this request is granted? Does the requested change negatively affect environmental conditions or the value of surrounding properties? And what is the ability of the property in question we put to a reasonable economic use as it is presently zoned? These are the criteria upon which any decision of that we make would be based. And while these are somewhat subjective, we are expected to submit to the City Commission if finding a fact based on these criteria. In order to consider evidence for or against the request, we will conduct a public hearing in which we will review presented evidence. First, we will hear from the petitioner or the representative and ask that they give us a brief overview of their request and their justification for the request. We will review any written comments or documentation received from the public. Then we will hear comments from the public that are at this meeting, either in favor of or in opposition to the proposed change. I should comment that serious consideration is given to the public comments. However, it's the content of the comments that is most important to us and not necessarily the number. And we will also consider recommendations and comments from the city's planning staff. And once we've heard and considered the evidence presented, the commission may decide to render a recommendation this evening, or we may postpone action to either simply give the matter additional consideration or to collect additional evidence. With that said, as I said, we'll first hear from the petitioner. Is it Mr. Christ?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, and sir, if you'd identify yourself for the record and very briefly tell us what it is you're requesting and what's your rationale for doing it.
I'm Rex Christ, I own Lightning Quick Gas and Go. We have convenience stores throughout Illinois County, actually throughout Southern Michigan. What we want to do is basically tear that, the old brass lantern down, start from scratch. Put up a building, gas pumps. I think I stated before, there will be no diesel there. I shouldn't say there'd be no diesel, there'd be car diesel or light truck diesel, there would be no semi diesel, it won't, it won't be a truck stop or anything like that. It'll be basically like all of our other locations, probably the one that people would most know from Adrian would be the one just north of town, which is the old, used to be a throttles restaurant at M fifty and fifty-two, we tore that down and put up basically what we're going to do in Adrian.
Commissioners, questions for Mr. Christ? Gordon, are you talking? You're, you're muted if you are.
I'm trying to talk, but.
Okay.
I'm looking at the cover letter that goes with the, this document that you were reading from Mr. Chikovitz. What's the name of your investment company?
It's Christ Investment Company, doing business as Lightning Quick Cast and Go.
Okay, Jeremy, can you make a correction on this because you've got it listed as Christ Investment Company?
Yes, I noticed that too. It happens a lot, people throw the H in.
Yeah, well, it's got your name correctly about, right above it, so I think it's just a kind of a typo. Wanted to make sure that the paperwork is correct at City Hall, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Christ? Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. As noted at our last meeting, we had received a written comment from Mr. Dempsey. Jeremy, was there any other additional written comments or phone comments on this particular matter?
No, other than, there was a few people that called, but they seem to be in the meeting, so I assume you'll hear from them. And if not, I can go over those.
Okay, thank you. I would ask that Mr. Dempsey's letter that we, that we reviewed last month be entered into the minutes as it is part of the record of this meeting. With that said, we will open the public hearing portion of this. And if anyone wishes to address the planning commission on this particular proposal, please identify yourself by name and address and very briefly tell us what it is you wish to say. Anybody? Oh, Mr. Lucas, please go ahead. You, you are mute, you're muted.
There I go. Oh, good evening. My name is Fred Lucas, I'm here representing some of the individuals, one of the individuals who was also present here, who has the existing gas station at the corner of Sand Creek and Beecher. I'm Sand Creek and two twenty-three, I apologize. Couple of things that I wanted to discuss, obviously, I have noted the statement by Mr. Dempsey, received a copy of his letter. I think Mr. Dempsey, his comments are very relevant. The other thing I would wanted to point out to the to the planning commission is this. This is when you do a rezoning and I, and I, and I, and I apologize if I, if I'm saying something that you already know or that, but I, I think it, it bears repeating. When you do a rezoning, you're not rezoning for this particular piece of property. You're rezoning for all the uses that are permitted under the B two district, including all of the potential uses that are under the special as a special approval. Consequently, you don't need, it is important that as you review this process, that you look not only at what Mr. Christ is proposing, but in fact, at all of the potential uses that may arise under the B two zoning district and make a determination as to whether or not you truly want to place those types of uses in close proximity to the types of uses that are presently existing at that location. One of the issues that we see with respect to this particular request as it relates to a gas station is the amount of traffic that's going to be generated coming not from the intersection where there's, where there's a traffic control, but is directly across the street from Illinois Christian Schools. Consequently, one of the things that we're concerned about is the ability of that, that particular location to deal with the traffic patterns and to deal with the traffic flow. And I think it would be unwise to proceed forward without further information on the exact nature of the type of traffic that can be anticipated from this particular area, including potentially a traffic study to determine whether or not traffic at this location would be detrimental not only to the existing businesses, but also to any potential businesses that may come into the area. This use was identified as being for office use under the B one district. That's the zoning district that it presently exists on. Under the B two district, although of course B one uses are permitted, the length and list of special uses permitted under that district are significantly greater, including, for example, work release facilities, fast food restaurants, mini warehouses, wholesale establishments, all of which are potential uses in the B two district. And the question is, is whether or not, number one, this is consistent with your master plan, which I understand at the present time it is not. Now, I, I, I am also aware of the fact that the, the city is in the process of reviewing its master plan at this point. Although it has not yet been adopted and you know, there's many steps to go between merely reviewing and, and, and making those adoptions to the master plan. But at the present time, this use is not consistent with the master plan, which identifies this area for office use. I believe it is incumbent upon the planning commission, of course, incumbent upon the city, city council when this matter comes before it to consider the adverse effects that may arise, not only from the particular use that Mr. Chris is, is proposing at this location. Because obviously, we all understand what the benefit is, that the, the brass laner property is laid bacon for a while, we all understand that. You know, it would be, it would be nice to have that torn down and to be replaced. The problem is, what do you replace it with in the haste to, in the haste to bring another business in? It's necessary to look and see whether or not making that replacement will be beneficial to the community as a whole or whether it may in fact drive out existing businesses that are already there. We know that the, that there are residential structures behind this property. We know that there are office buildings, including Mr. Dempsey, law firms and other at this location. And we know that there's a school across the street. And the efficacy and the, and the, and the reasonableness of placing a another gas station smack dab in the middle of that with the additional traffic that'll be generated in that location should require more thought than, than simply than what we have, excuse me, I apologize. Any meaning more thought, but should require more evidence than what has been presented here today. And again, once again, I, and I, and I urge the planning commissioner to recognize this fact. We're not talking merely about a gas station, we're talking about all of the uses that are attended with the B two district. And you know, as you go, and I'm sitting here looking at the zoning ordinance under the B one district, the B one district has twelve permitted uses and I apologize, I've got it right here in front of me. Twelve, thirteen permitted uses and exactly three principal uses subject to special approval. By contrast, the B two district has twelve permitted uses and fifteen different special uses that would be subject to special approval. Including, as I pointed out, work release facilities, public utilities, outdoor recreational space, mini warehouses, wholesale establishments, fast food restaurants, automobile sales rooms, so all those uses are potential uses in the B two district. And when you consider rezoning this property, and again, you can't just rezone this property. We're talking about rezoning that entire section of the, of the city, because to rezone one single property would, would be an example of spot zoning, which I'm sure your planning staff will tell you is not something that should be done. You would be required in, in, in essence, to rezone the entire strip of property, including properties such as the property owned by Mr. Dempsey, in which he, he has issues with that rezoning. I, I, I don't want to keep you forever on this, I, I think I've said enough at this point, so I'm going to pass the mic to whoever else wants to speak at this point. Thank you very much for your attention, I appreciate your help.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Anyone else? Anyone? I would be surprised, we've got, in addition to Mr. Lucas and Ms. Punnett, I see one, two, three, four non-commissioners and Mr. Christ, four non-commissioners here, I would presume that one or more of them was here to comment on this.
Mr. Chairman, just so you're clear, I didn't want to, I don't want to mislead anybody, I am representing Muna, where you see Mona's iPhone.
Oh, okay.
Will not be, she, I, I, I've spoken for.
Okay, we appreciate that, sir, thank you. But anyone else?
How many dispensaries and how many gas stations is Adrian gonna have?
Sir, we, we need to have, first, you need to identify yourself by name and, and where you live, please.
Mark, thirteen fifty-seven Sand Creek Highway.
Can I get your last name, Mark?
No last name. Do I have to give you a last name?
If you, for us to give serious consideration to your comments, it would certainly help.
Mark Carr.
Okay, please tell us what you'd like to tell us, Mark.
How many dispensaries and how many gas stations can Adrian hold? How many dispensaries and how many gas stations are enough until we load the city up with Dollar Generals as well? Don't we have enough of that, enough Dollar Generals, enough dispensaries, enough gas stations, can Adrian use something different?
Anything else you'd like to add?
Well, if you guys are taking consideration and changing B one to B two zone in that specific area, why not change zoning in different areas? So other B one zonings can get turned into B two zones and maybe more dispensaries could come in.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I'm just saying, I mean, I see there's a lot of things going on in Adrian, I've been here for over ten years. We, dispensaries popped up out of nowhere, Dollar Generals popped up out of nowhere. Gas stations, we have enough of those, if you count the ones in Adrian alone, I believe we have like nine or ten gas stations already. There's one in Adrian Limits before Onsted Freeway, there's Sand Creek, there's Beecher, there's Wesco. We got Speedway, we got a Shell, we got a Exxon, we got a Mobil, we got another Mobil. And what about the gas station that's closed on Mommy and what is that church? There's a gas station there that's been closed, you know? Somebody should probably, why doesn't Rex Christ grab that and redo that instead? He's over here talking about, he's rebuilding these buildings, maybe how to look into the San Oak and purchase that as well, too.
We'd buy that in a minute if it was for sale.
You should buy it.
Okay.
There's, I'd like to request there's no more pizza places in town, too.
Pizza places, how many pizza places are in town, boss man?
Okay, any, any other comments from this? From Mark?
No, no, sir.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate it. Anybody else? If hearing no other comments, I will close the public hearing portion of this particular hearing. We have comments from city staff, would either Mr. Elliott or Mr. Clement care to comment on those?
I'll go through it very briefly, I mean, you've had it for a couple of months now, so I don't want to belabor it, but to the caller's point and to Mr. Lucas's point, you know, we're, we're not considering a gas station today, we're considering changing the zoning of this property eighteen fifty-three West Mommy, as well as the adjacent properties eighteen ninety-three, eighteen eighty-one, eighteen oh one and seventeen oh one West Mommy, from B one, which is local business district to B two, which is community business district. And all the attendant uses that are allowed in those districts would be not allowed if that rezoning were ultimately adopted by the City Commission. That act, in fact, creates a broader range of uses to which this property can be used. And one of the factors that we cited in our staff review is that, in fact, it has sat vacant for very many years, so many years that the building has fallen into such disrepair that it needs to be torn down at this point. It would, it makes sense to staff that allowing a larger range of uses on the site would increase the possibility that the site will be redeveloped, which is our goal. It's important to remember that a number of those uses, including the one that the applicant proposes are special uses. So they are not permitted by right, they're permitted if they can meet certain criteria that would be reviewed at that time, that they were submitted for consideration along with the site plan that would be attended there, too. Issues such as the location of the drive, vis a vis the drive across the street. Those are things that, for the school across the street, those are things that would be considered at the time of site plan review and, and zoning exception permit consideration. And if there were indeed found to be problems with those particular site-specific particulars, those could be a reason to deny an application in the future if, if a problem were going to be attended to that. Rezoning is not the stage where those issues are necessarily germane. If you feel generally that the range of uses that are allowed here would be appropriate on this site, staff report indicates to you the zoning of surrounding properties, properties that are adjacent or nearby are either zoned ERO, R M one or B two. There is no other B one in the area other than the, the adjacent properties that are also proposed for rezoning and which have been noted. the pro, the adjacent properties that are also uh, uh, proposed for rezoning, which have been noticed as part of this uh, cause public hearing that you're having tonight. So there's four factors that are considered uh, in our ordinance when zoning change is proposed. The first is whether or not do their identifiable conditions related to the application that have changed that would justify the amendment. Uh, staff has observed, uh, as I already mentioned, that the property has been unsuccessfully marketed for many years and sat vacant for many years. Ultimately resulting in being sold at tax sale. Uh, that suggests to us that B two zoning might be helpful for the reason that I stated, that it provides a broader range of allowed uses for the site. Uh, the second factor is what are the precedents and possible effects of such precedents which might result from approval or denial of the petition? Staff points to the need to upzone the adjacent properties uh, from B one to B two to avoid spot zoning, as Mr. Lucas pointed out, that would not, would not be appropriate to consider this site on its own, but uh, the the application has been noticed in such a way uh, that all those sites are now under consideration uh, by the planning commission for upzoning to B two. Number three, does the petition district change adversely affect environmental conditions or the value of surrounding properties? Our observation would be that it would likely improve the conditions in the area by eliminating blight and uh, leading to the redevelopment of the subject site. And finally, four, what is the ability of the property in question to be put to a reasonable economic use in the zoning district in which it is presently located? Uh, again, we would point to the market history related to the site and the experience uh, the property owners have had trying to reuse it uh, as it's currently zoned. So with that, our conclusion of staff is that we recommend uh, approval of the rezoning of seventeen oh one, eighteen oh one, eighteen fifty-three, eighteen eighty-one, and eighteen ninety-three West Mommy Street from B one to B two district. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Elliot. Are, are there any questions for Mr. Elliot?
I have a question. It, and this is a convenient start, like a seven eleven, or if Rex just wanted to put up the lightning quick without gas. Could that go on it currently as it sits?
Yes.
The other questions for Mr. Elliot?
Uh, I have another question, too. As for the, don't laugh at me, Jacobitz, as for the, the, the driveway and the issue whether it pretty much butts up with runaway Christian. So if he were to.
Right, that will depend on a site plan review for whatever.
I know, but my question is since that's sort of, that's a, what are they called, a major thoroughfare? Is there state of Michigan guidelines that they would have to follow to put curb cuts in? I mean, uh, my question is I, I don't want to do all this. Maybe upset some people, maybe make some people happy and find eventually that nothing can go on there because they can't put the curb cuts in. And we all look like bad guys. You know, I don't know if Rex has had any studies done yet or any pre-work, or if there's anything you can add, Greg, I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm asking. It is a question I have.
I think that would be federal also. That's US two twenty-three.
Yeah, I think probably M dot administers it, but yes, it's a US highway and, and they'll have to get a permit from M dot. For that, what I would expect would happen is at the ti- time they seek uh, that permit, that they're gonna ask them to align that driveway with the runaway Christian School driveway across the street so that they're not offset. The problems that you have with turning motions are usually when driveways are, are too close, not far enough apart or not aligned. And you do have a left turn lane out there, so that's an advantage. Uh, you're not very close to the intersection, so that's an advantage. It would seem to me that uh, if those driveways are aligned, that that will make uh, for a more safe situation than um, would exist where the driveway is right now. That'll be up to M dot, uh, if they are in fact the reviewing agency for that. You know, they will allow a driveway somewhere on the site, uh, so they have.
They have to allow a driveway.
Yes.
Commissioners, uh, at this point, we will go to commission discussion.
I think in considering this just for rezoning, that it would obviously be a very good idea. I mean, even taking the gas station out of consideration at this point for all the reasons that Greg has listed, I mean, the only way we're gonna get rid of this blighted building and get someone to do something there is if we put in something, I mean, if somebody plans to put in something that has enough economic value to tear down the building, build a new building. That's not a small undertaking, so I think by opening it up to B two, that kind of increases our chances for literally anybody, not just necessarily a gas station, but m- more businesses to be able to do something in this spot, because it's obviously not happened to this point.
And that's, it's a, you know, it's a kind of, uh, in addition to that, Krista, it's a high-traffic commercial area that is probably deserving of a higher commercial zoning.
Oh, one hundred percent. I mean, it's as we said, it's on a US highway. I mean, if this isn't the right place.
Yeah, one of the busiest roads and intersections in the, you know, in the county, probably, so.
Right, so I mean, it, it makes sense.
It also goes along with the zoning on the east side of Sand Creek Wolf Creek Highway.
Yep.
Jeremy, um, was LCS noticed on this meeting, about this meeting?
Yes, they were. Everyone around has noticed.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I figured. Well, they don't seem to have a huge concern about this, because unless you've heard from them and.
No, I personally sent them and everyone um, that would be rezoned uh, a long letter, including what would happen. Um, they got one and then everyone else got the normal notice that was around them. Um, but yeah, so they did get noticed for sure.
I know, I, I believe that the majority of uh, the cars in and out of there, as it applies to the school, go out on Wolf Creek Highway as opposed to out on two twenty-three. Now, I think people that use the center, the gym and the pool, that kind of stuff do go in and out. But I, I mean, I go out there and the center turn lane seems to be pretty good at accommodating, you know, the traffic there, but there's not a huge amount of traffic. The, at least that, that, that comes out of that side of the street, so. You know, I, but I agree, they need to offset the, they need to offset there, or not offset, align the uh, the driveways. That would help a lot.
Other commissioner comments?
Commissioner Jacobitz, I, I do believe that we have to look at the, at the main issue is, and that's the rezoning. Uh, yes, to the B two district and not to the specific application. And we have a criteria list, which we are bound to um, and obligated to pay attention to. And as Mr. Elliott has just run down that list, I just, I don't see any negatives um, from this rezoning. Now, there, there might be negatives uh, when we come up to specific application for this area, but, but right now I don't think that as a, you know, as a planning commission um, that we have enough negative within our criteria list um, to, to value this any other way.
I think you're right. I agree.
I agree with Commissioner.
I also, I, I also think with the discussions we've had for the master plan and the result, you know, this falls right along with it.
Yeah, I would definitely agree with that, especially after reviewing the results that we've gotten back from citizens on the master plan. One of the things I kept seeing over and over is loosen restrictions, make it so that more businesses can use the sites without so much red tape. That seems like this, this is exactly what people are asking for, so that also is another thing that I would take into consideration.
Then after reading Mr. Dempsey's letter, I mean, a lot of his concerns and his issues most, almost all of them can be dealt with at site plan review.
Right.
You know, I, I didn't see anything on there that was not within our scope of dealing with.
And maybe more.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, and maybe more activity and development in that area of this type might spur the, the, uh, the government or M dot to further develop that intersection with maybe a left turn light and to try to dampen some of the, some of the traffic out there and, and.
Folks, if it's okay, commissioners, if it's okay, um, we will quickly review. Uh, make, make a informal finding of fact relative to the criteria. Uh, as we've discussed, what identifiable conditions have changed, which would justify the proposed amendment. Um, we've commented on the fact that the old brass lantern has been unsuccessfully marketed for a number of years, it sold on a tax sale, which says something about the value of the property. We have discussed the fact that uh, Krista commented that the, the survey that is in progress right now suggests that citizens are looking for more open, less restricted uses. Um, those are all things that uh, uh, are conditions that have changed relative to this application. Um, are there precedences and possible effects uh, which might result from approval or denial of this petition? Um, we are considering um, as part of this rezoning of the adjacent properties uh, seventeen oh one, eighteen oh one, eighteen fifty-three, eighteen eighty-one, and eighteen ninety-three. This would not be a spot, if, if that were to happen, this would not be a spot zoning. Would changing this zoning adversely affect environmental conditions or the value of surrounding properties? Uh, certainly not environmental conditions, I, I wouldn't foresee, certainly not the rezoning uh, would not do so. And frankly, I would suggest that uh, uh, helping the zoning would enhance the value of the surrounding properties as opposed to negatively impacting them. And what is the ability of the property in question to be put to a reasonable economic use in the current, as it is currently zoned? Um, yes, I'm sure it could be put to reasonable economic uses as it's currently zoned, but we've gone many, 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 many years with it out, without having been done so. So I think we could find in the affirmative for all of these criteria. And if we so chose, we could take action to recommend to the city commission that those listed properties be rezoned from B one to B two.
I moved, I moved to recommend it to the city council.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cotton to recommend to the city commission, the rezoning of those listed properties from B one to B two is their support.
Support Taylor.
Support from Commissioner Taylor. Commissioners, any additional discussion? Okay. I mean, if you take a roll call vote for us, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Gauss?
Yes.
Cotton?
Yes.
Jacobitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Wetherby?
You all got papers.
Support.
Johnson?
Part.
Watson?
Or?
Motion passed unanimously.
Hey, thank you. Um, I believe that was the last action item on our agenda. I uh, would point out that the email that came today, I think it went to everyone uh, the results of the survey um, of which Greg, how many respondents were there? Uh, a big number?
Hundred and sixty-one or so.
How many?
Five hundred and sixty-some odd. As I, last I checked, it was five sixty-one, we may have got a couple.
A, a, a good, a goodly response. A good response. Uh, I would encourage you to take a look at the, at the summation of those responses. Uh, I would comment, I think the cloud page is, as I've commented before, is entirely useless, because I think it measured all of the occurrences of the word street or avenue or lane, because those were the biggest letters on it, so, yeah.
Different methodologies for dealing that with that and making it more interesting than just a list of addresses, but.
Yeah.
You know, we, we turn the raw data over to Gifles and.
Okay, because what would be interesting or probably even useful would be a count of how many respondents came from particular sections of the, of the city. That would, that would be of use, I think. Um, looks like a lot of, a lot of Dominicans had, had time to fill out the survey. Uh, bless their hearts.
Nothing but time, Mike.
Yeah, okay. Well, depends on, depends on how old they are, Gordon.
Well. They're not going. Well, never mind.
Is there any other business to come before us this evening? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Appreciate your time.
Mike, Mike.
Oh.
Lynn, Lynn hit, Lynn hit something.
Oh, Lynn, I'm sorry.
No problem. It's just a simple question. Um, at what point are the results gonna be shared or can citizens get a copy of those now, or when could we? Or is it online? We could go read the responses.
Uh, you can certainly get a, a copy. I'll forward you one. Um, I, I, we, like I say, we turned it over to Gifles for them to incorporate into their work and uh, I expect their next session before the planning commission, they'll present that.
Okay.
It, it's kind of raw as it is, Lynn, but I'd be glad, I will, I can forward it to you. I've got Lynn's address, so.
Great, thank you. I just want to scan it.
Yep. Anything else? Anyone else? Okay, we in fact are adjourned. Thank you all very much. We'll see you next month. I think it's I think April third, I think, but if not.
Oh, the third Saturday.
Okay, it's not April third then, never mind. Okay.
And I'll be gone that, I'll be gone that meeting. I'll be out of town.
I will as well.
Yeah, we better remove, we better move that, because that's spring break in Adrian.
It is, it is the day after Easter, I know that.
Yeah.
Seriously, are we gonna have an attendance problem with that?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna be here at all. I know that for sure.
Okay, it is April fifth. It's a, it's a Tuesday and Easter was on Sunday. Um, let me grab my calendar here.
The thirteenth is the next Tuesday.
Okay. Generally.
I would be April sixth.
I'm sorry, yes, our, our meeting would be, let's back up. Our meeting would be April sixth, which is a Tuesday. Easter was the Monday, was the Sunday. Is it still an attendance issue?
Yes.
Yeah, I will be here.
Okay, the next Tuesday would be Tuesday, the thirteenth.
That would work for me.
Perfectly fine.
Yes, I'm good with it.
Okay, if there's general consensus for that, we would entertain a motion to formally reschedule our April meeting for Tuesday the thirteenth.
You already adjourned the meeting. I think you can do that at, at your call, Mr. Chair and.
Yes, thank you.
No vote taken on adjournment.
That's, that's good.
Yeah. We're, we're still in session, okay? They, that didn't count.
Sure.
Um, Greg, Jeremy, are you guys uh, available for the thirteenth?
I am always available.
Oh. You need to get a life, buddy. Okay, we would entertain a motion to set our April meeting for Tuesday, the thirteenth.
Move to set the meeting for April thirteenth.
Support.
Port? Anybody?
Support.
Okay. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Done, April thirteenth. Now.
Does that move the ZBA meeting too?
Pardon?
Does that move the ZBA meeting as well?
They would have.
They got.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
That, that, they've got to fend for themselves. I, I can't do that.
I do, I do have uh, anticipation of a ZBA meeting. Greg, what are your thoughts on that? Am I able to move that? They meet as needed.
Well, well, we'll have to deal with the chair and the ZBA on that, but I think we can move it to the same date.
Hey. If there's no other business to come before us, now we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Good night, Mike.
This is for real.
Night. Good night, Greg.
Bye-bye.